And welcome to the April 18th meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting the audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Vice President Van Helsing, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Ian Hasinga.
Here.
President Zarela.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Kucher.
Here.
Counselor Cragan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz. Counselor De Natale.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
So we have 10 members present.
Thank you very much. There were no registrations for remote participation this evening. If there is anyone present here this evening who would like to participate in public forum, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and you may then speak for not more than two minutes.
I am a Fitchburg resident speaking on items 6, 8, 7-2, 3, and 7, 100-2, 3. Imagine you have a house guest. You were happy to have them at first, but they just won't leave, and they're running up your electric, water, and sewer bills. The contact tracing team is like this. COVID was endemic a long time ago, but they just won't leave and are looking for grants for everything from flu shots to lead paint to stick around forever. The problem is these grants come with administrative expenses for the city. We're also adding something like a dozen people to our payroll, but the grants don't cover their pension and post-retiree medical costs. We're kicking those unaccrued costs down the road and placing them on our children and grandchildren. It's unfair to them. It's selfish to keep growing the city's payroll and budget every time someone thinks, "Wouldn't it be nice to do this or that?" Ignoring the impact on future generations. It's inflationary, and it's unsustainable. Lemonster is now serving the area's unhoused population with the closing of our father's house, so our health department should be cut. It shouldn't be growing. Not counting the contact tracing team, we already have twice as many people in our health department as Lemonster has. You all recently approved another inspector with CDBG funding. The U.S. already spends much more per capita than other developed countries on health with worse results, including declining lifespans. Throwing money around doesn't work. Please vote no, and please work to get another more affluent city appointed, the lead Montic Uso public health network community. We can't afford all this spending, and the burden of a regional service should not fall disproportionately on the poorest municipality in that region. Thank you.
Any further public comment this evening? All right. We have announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, April 20th, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 203 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate this meeting. Reverend Annie Belmer and City Councilor Bernie Schultz are co-facilitating a wrestling with racism discussion this coming Thursday night, April 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30 over the Zoom platform. The discussion topic is recruiting and retaining Black teachers and administrators. For your free ticket to the Zoom discussion, please visit the Eventbrite website. A group of students are researching our city parks for the purpose of adding supplemental material for the city's website. They are working with James Bunell, Director of Parks and Rec, Department of Public Works, and focusing their studies on Fitchburg Historical Society archives. However, they welcome information from the public on the following topics. Activities that have -- for any given park, activities that have taken place at the park. For example, Cogswell Park has had wedding showers, and Coolidge hosts area athletic groups. Any personal stories you or your family has about a Fitchburg City Park, or any photos, but online only, no paper. On Wednesday, April 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., civic ambassador stewards training by New View Communities and Fitchburg Civic Forum will take place at Main Street Studios, 675 Main Street, right across the street. Also available by Zoom if you email framos@nvcoom.org. Join Francisco Ramos and City Councilors Cragan and Cruz as moderators. The stewards program presents a special municipal election year series of free workshops with the Fitchburg Civic Forum. These workshops are for anyone interested in learning how to run for office or the protocols for applying to serve on boards and commissions in Fitchburg. The April 12th event will focus on the importance of a functional local democracy with Joanna Bellada, our Fitchburg City Clerk, and myself, Council President Zarela, as guests. On Saturday, April 22nd, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., there will be a Panakaku breakfast, Finnish pancake, basically, with bacon, sausage, fruit juice, Finnish coffee bread, and coffee, tea, and cocoa for a $10 ticket. Loaves of Finnish coffee bread are also for sale. This will be at Sima Park. And from 8:30 a.m. until noon, there will also be a Sima flea market, all proceeds of which will benefit their scholarship fund. This will be at the Finnish Center at Sima Park, 67 Scott Road. You can also check it out at sima-park.org or at the Fitchburg Friends of Sima -- sorry, the Facebook group Friends of Sima Park. And lastly, Sunday, April 23rd, at 2:00 p.m., there is Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day commemoration at the Lemonster Public Library, 30 West Street in Lemonster, sponsored by Swan Hope Press. April 24th is the traditional Remembrance Day. Join us for conversation about Armenia's ancient history, economics, family histories, and arts and culture. There will be poems read aloud, light refreshments, including Armenian-style paklava, and homemade Armenian mountain tea. This is free, and you can contact Sally Cragan at sallycragan@gmail.com. Next, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kucher.
Thank you, Mr. President. We took up numerous appointments this evening. New appointment, Fitchburg Council on Aging, Annie L. Belmer. That was approved unanimously. Special police officer to the Fitchburg Police Department, Philip Kearns, which was approved unanimously. We have new appointments, the full-time student police officers to the Fitchburg Police Department, Matthew Posson, Zachary Saldana, Sean Burns, Ramon Viches, Connor Moynihan, and Brandon Bento, all of which were approved unanimously. Permanent full-time firefighter, Alec M. Diamond, which was approved unanimously. New appointment to the Board of Health, Diane F. Evans to Signot RN. She was approved unanimously. And two reappointments. Anne Cervantes, the city treasurer and tax collector, which was approved unanimously, as well as a reappointment of Mr. Calvin Brooks to the city auditor and finance director, which was approved unanimously.
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
On the motion.
All right, on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion, I'd like to say to let everybody know that Diane Evans, the new director of the Board of Health, is a graduate from St. Bernice High. She's one of my classmates. She's going to do an excellent job. I just want to tell you that, and we should be very proud to have her on our team. The other thing I'd like to say is, Anne and Mr. Brooks, I want to say thank you very much for reappointing, and I know I'm a pain in the neck, and I know Calvin, I liked what you said out here a couple of minutes ago. You'd be more than happy to work with me till May of '26, and that's great. So just wanted you guys to let you know. Thank you very much again.
All right. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, the report of the Appointments Committee is unanimously approved. I believe we have some swearings in now. I would ask, as usual, or rather, first I'll invite the chiefs to introduce their appointees.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors. So thank you very much. This is Alec Diamond. This was a top candidate. He is -- he'll be filling one of two vacant positions that we currently have on the Fitchburg Fire Department. He'll be replacing Marty Kukla, who sadly passed away as an active firefighter back in January. Alec is a Fitchburg resident. He's a hard-working young man who's always dreamt of being a firefighter, following the footsteps of his uncle, Robert Parent, who I worked with and was a firefighter for over 30 years in Fitchburg. Myself and the other fire officers had the opportunity to meet him several times over the months of the hiring process, and we are very confident that he's going to deliver the professionalism and dedication that the city expects and also deserves. He's a licensed EMT, has passed all of his medical and physical examinations, and he'll bring our staff into 80. As I said, we are still short one. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
No? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I think we'll hold the swearing in until we've introduced the other new appointees and then do them in sequence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start, first of all, thanking the Appointments Committee this evening for accepting the candidates that I presented this evening. It's unfortunate that Phil Kearns can't be here this evening. I was really looking forward to presenting him to the city council. Many of you may remember Phil Kearns is a former deputy chief of police here in the city. He recently reached out to me, asking to come back to the city of Fitchburg and continue working till he no longer can legislatively. So we were very excited to bring him back on as a special police officer, but he couldn't be here this evening, so I'm very grateful for that appointment. Next is the six candidates that I presented. I'm not going to go through the exact biographies of each of these candidates, but what I can tell you is, the six gentlemen that you see before you this evening went through an extensive background check. We did our extreme diligence when we hired police officers, and I can tell you, this is a very unique group of future police officers. What they bring to the table, not only from an educational level or from life experiences, just the way they were brought up, their values, and really understanding who they were, who they are as human beings, is extremely important. And as we hire new police officers, that has to be an integral part of the hiring process when you're hiring police officers, that they have the right fit to do an extremely tough job today. And I was really excited what was presented to me for candidates. Currently, prior to this appointment, the police department has been short-staffed. Before these six appointments tonight, I was down 10 positions for police officers. With the addition that you see here this evening, these six, that brings us down to just four vacancies left, and my team is going to continue to advocate and try to get the next four so we can finally get to a full staffing. But I would like to just take the moment, just I'm going to ask one at a time to rise, just so you know who was appointed tonight, and we can move on. Matthew Posson. Thank you, sir. Zachary Saldana. Sean Burns. Ramon Vicky's. Connor Monahan. And Brendan Bento. This will be the largest group of student officers that we've put forth probably in the last 20 years, as I was speaking to them outside. This is an exceptional group because the bonding that they're going to go through in the next 24 weeks at the police academy, which is slated to start on the 24th, is going to be exceptional. The relationships they're going to make collectively together as a group of six police officers will last, hopefully, for the next 30 years, and we're really excited to get them on board. So thank you for your support and your consideration on these appointments.
Thank you very much. And now, if we could clear the center of the bench, we will have the swearings in, and friends and family are welcome to take as many pictures as they'd like.
I will be after me. As you saw in the promises where.
As you saw in the promises where.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Accompany upon you.
Accompany.
As a new appointment, permanent, full-time, Fitchburg Fire Department.
As a new appointment, permanent, full-time, Fire Department. To the city officials. So we got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As we perform together, I would like to please send the audience.
I will be upon this where.
As you saw in the promises where.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Accompany upon you as.
Accompany.
A full-time student police officer.
A full-time student police officer.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So long gone.
So long gone.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, welcome. Be safe.
Thank you very much.
We're happy to have you from the sheriff's office.
So much.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks for all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Godspeed.
Congratulations.
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 Sorry I screwed up your last names.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he's the kitchen, yeah. Oh, thank you. All I like.
Still like you.
You wouldn't know because you didn't say anything when you get home. Congratulations, all you guys. I love you. Congratulations.
I could be.
I'm going to steal this.
Yeah, it's not mine.
This is still good.
All right. And next, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, for the week of April 4, 2023, our minutes seem to be in order.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To accept the report, second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, they are unanimously approved. We have a communication from His Honor, the mayor, a reappointment letter for Annie DiMartino as a member of the Fitchburg Council on Aging, term to expire November 1, 2025. That will be referred to Appointments. And next, we have the report of the Council as a whole committee. We took up two items on April 12th. One, both were increases to the rates and minimum charges for, respectively, the water and sewer rates, and both of those were approved unanimously.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report with no objection. It is unanimously approved. Finance Committee, Counselor De Natale.
Thank you. Finance met last Wednesday, April 12th, and took up the following, 8723, a national council on aging grant in the approximate amount of $149,848.73 to increase COVID-19 vaccination rates in MPHN communities and to ensure older adults and people with disabilities get the latest COVID and flu vaccines. That was adopted. 8823, in order that they're being hereby appropriated, the sum of $1,400,000 to be charged against available funds and credit to Long Show School Windows and Doors Capital Project. That was adopted. And 8923, appropriating $400,000 to be charged against available funds and credit to DPW expenses, DPW administrative expenses, stormwater contracts, services. That was also adopted.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Speaking on the motion.
On the motion, Counselor Green.
On 8723, while we have Department Head Curry here, on that particular grant, was -- is it a concern that people, that older people with disabilities were not able to get vaccines if they so desired? And.
Just a moment.
Should I redraft, read back my motion?
Thank you.
All right, I'll read back my motion.
Just so that we can accept input. Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That was my question, is if people were -- don't go anywhere. Right. If older people or people with disabilities were having trouble, if they so desired to get a vaccine, or were they having trouble with that? And then how is this money going to help ensure that they're getting everything that they need or want?
So it doesn't only, it doesn't just contain COVID vaccine. It is also a flu vaccine incentive, and it will help the Board of Health and the 13 Montic Uso public health network communities to allow flu and COVID vaccinations on a regular basis for the next fiscal year, FY '24. So elderly folks and those that are participating in senior centers and aging, council on aging, and those types of activities will have easier access to the vaccines.
So we could then see COVID or flu vaccine clinics here at our senior center?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And if I may add one comment, the grant does cover all the benefits of the employees that are associated with the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor De Natale, can we pull out 8723? I'll just make a motion to accept 8723.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Fleming, were you on that item?
I was going to ask to have that one pulled as well.
Okay. All right. Anyone know further on that motion? Counselor Cragan.
Not of the motion, just a question. Or does this mean that we'll be -- sorry, can I?
Can we? Okay, we have -- are you willing to withdraw? Okay, motion withdrawn.
I understand tomorrow at the senior center, there's going to be a follow-up vaccine clinic. Will this grant allow more vaccine clinics open to the public in the region, such as we've seen in the last six months?
We have another grant coming down the pike for that one. That will be heard, I believe, next week. It's actually on tonight's agenda, I believe, but yes, there is an intention to keep public clinics going as far as the need and wants that are out there in the communities.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of gratitude from members of the public, so that was my only concern. Thank you.
All right. Can I assume that the motion is renewed?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. We have before us a motion on 8723 alone. Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Fleming.
Yes. Yeah, I do have a little bit of, I'm wondering why this is such a big, such a big deal right now, where, if I'm not mistaken, Governor Healer already said the pandemic, we don't have a pandemic anymore. And most of the people that go to the senior center and all those places, aren't they already supposed to be vaccinated? Weren't they already vaccinated?
The incentive is for boosters.
Okay. Can we have the motion withdrawn one more time?
I don't know if I'm going to withdraw my motion this time, Mr. President, but I think I will, for the sake of your chair.
Thank you.
Oh, and the only reason, let me just, let me just build on that question. The only reason I ask is, I have many people that I know that are doing the vaccinations all over, all over the state, and they said there's been a huge decline. And the only reason people are coming are because they want their incentives, they want their gifts, and people literally come two and three times in a week to get those incentive gifts.
Yes.
So are we drawing people for the vaccine, or, I mean, are you really getting that amount of people? I'm curious, because I hear other things.
First off, counsel, this grant is aimed towards elders and those immunocompromised. So.
So we will be in the facilities that these people are in to help access to the vaccine as well as the boosters and whatever is necessary to keep them up to date, flu and COVID, not just COVID.
Okay.
So to your second point, we will keep the clinics going as long as there is a request or a need. I mean, if there is eight folks, there is eight folks. If there are 80 folks, we'll continue to host vaccination clinics until there is no longer a need. It's the idea there is to keep the vaccinations going.
Okay, thank you.
There are folks that are still asking for it.
Thank you.
Counselor Boeschmann?
Mr. Curry, do we go to places like Antwell and St. Joseph's House and Daniel Heights for the elderly? There's a lot of elderly who...
We personally run clinics in all those facilities, yes.
Oh, there is?
And we propose to continue to do that as long as they wish to have them. We're not pushing vaccine on anyone. If they want to have a clinic, we will host it for them, or we will run them for it. We are not forcing anybody into a vaccine, and we are... The days of incentives and gift cards, I believe, are not available any longer since the pandemic is over.
Now, Mr. Curry, since you're here, you probably can answer this. I was watching the news tonight, CNN News, and they're saying that this... What is it, Bernie, CDC? CDC of a government program, they are recommending maybe another shot for the elderly. I'm... Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it. I had COVID twice. I'm lucky to be alive. Jackie over here was saying a prayer that I make it, and I pray grateful for what you did for me. But anyway, I just want to tell you, they're coming out with another shot for the seniors too, on top of all that's coming out down the pipe. Did you hear that?
Yes, I did. And I don't want to be a head bobber, like I've been accused of earlier in the evening. There are recommendations by the CDC that elderly folks and immunocompromised folks become vaccinated every two months.
Every two months?
Yeah.
Some afraid of shots, too. That's their recommendation. I didn't make it up. All right. It's okay. You're not going to get afraid of me. I agree with it. Anyway, I make a motion. We... Oh, wait a minute, he's...
One moment, please.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President.
Director Curry, is the COVID virus and the flu virus still out there?
Yes, it is. We still have confirmed cases on a daily basis.
And which segments of our population have been hardest hit by these viruses?
Could you repeat that?
Which segments of our population are at greatest risk from these viruses?
These days, it is most of our elderly.
And this grant...
But there is no particular rhyme or reason to COVID these days still.
And this grant seeks to help protect the most vulnerable or the segment of our population at greatest risk?
It does, yes.
And with the end of the federal emergency, there will be changes in funding for these kinds of efforts. So this helps ensure that the vaccines will still be available to this at-risk population?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Janice Holly?
I just want to clarify that I said the Board of Health across the state and the country. I did not say the Director of Public Health was a bobblehead. Thank you.
Clarification noted.
Accept 08723.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. To an opposition, motion passes eight to two.
Move to accept the report for 088 and 08923.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendations of the committee for 88 and 8923. Anyone on the motion? All right. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is unanimous. We have two orders going to finance. 123, an order that Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the best value grant in the approximate amount of $135,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to continue providing staffing for various vaccine clinics and to continue providing outreach and collaborate with key stakeholders. 10123, the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Federal Aviation Administration bipartisan infrastructure law grant in the approximate amount of $491 for the purpose of said grant, which is to perform an environmental assessment and wildlife hazard assessment on the airport property. Those both stand referred to finance. 102 and 10323 are both proposals under RFPs for 260 Rollstone Street and 191 Main Street, respectively.
491.
Sorry, 491. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Those both stand referred to city property. We have a request for suspension of the rules for 10423. Wait. One moment, please. Gotcha. Right, right, right. Just that, I remember. Great. We have a request for suspension of the rules on 10423. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 10423. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
That's 10 yes.
Thank you. This is a housekeeping matter. Because we haven't done home rule petitions before, there was some lack of clarity as to what form it had to be passed in. We passed it as a petition. It is now in front of us as an order. It's the same exact thing we already voted on.
Move to approve the order 10423.
Second.
I have a motion and second. For the sake of formality, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
And Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
10 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Then we also have requests for suspension on 09023. Actually, what we need is a motion to pull 090 and 09123 from committee.
So moved.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for suspension of the rules?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Thank you. 10 yes.
Thank you. This is... We referred all three of the mayoral and council salary ordinances to Legislative Affairs. On further review, only the remaining one, I forget what number it was, but 090 and 09123 do not need further review by Legislative Affairs. They're quite straightforward, and we need to pass them before the budget can be finalized.
Move to approve 90 and 9123.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 90 and 9123 through their respective first readings. If...
Nope.
If there is no objection, we will take these under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, they are both passed through their first readings and will be taken up in third and final reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Next, we have 10523, Counselor Schultz and Gina... I'm sorry, Counselor Schultz, do you know the...
Teshera.
Teshera.
Teshera of 40 Nashua Street to request repair of sidewalk asphalt in front of 40 Nashua Street. And Counselors Gina Tally and Kuchar on behalf of Leo and Deborah Boskett to replace damaged berm at 580 Shea Street. We also have a request for suspension of the rules on 107 and 10823. Additionally, 10823 has a typographical error, which if the motion for suspension passes, the chief will explain to us.
Move suspension of the rules.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Question on the motion?
Okay.
What was the reason for the suspension?
This is just because there is a desire to get these hires done as quickly as possible so that they're in place for the coming months.
Okay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
10 yes.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you. I'd like to start by reiterating what Council President stated on the urgency of asking for suspension of the rules, and I appreciate that the council taking it up this evening. We've continued to be challenged in our 911 dispatch center. At full allotment of dispatches, I have 12 employees working that room. Typically, we run three, sometimes two dispatches at any given time. The complexity of the job is something. Currently, I'm down to eight dispatches. When I fall to that level of eight dispatches, it starts generating a lot of overtime. It takes, just like police officers, sometimes it takes two months, three months to get a 911 dispatcher with all their certification credentials to do that job. They're answering the phone 55,000 times a year. It's an extremely challenging job. So that being said, I'm down to eight dispatches right now. We advertised for full-time dispatches about a month ago. We're vetting out and processing applicants very aggressively at this time. It made us look outside the box how we can provide some relief in this room. So with eight dispatches, I'm running into an overtime situation almost on a daily basis. That creates a lot of stress on the eight full-timers, that they're never going home. They're working 16 hours a day, so they never have an opportunity to go home on a regular basis. When I can't fill it with a civilian dispatcher on overtime, then it reverts down to a police officer, which is happening all too frequently. I have to bring a police officer into the dispatch room that police officers on overtime at that point. The overtime rate for a police officer is in excess of $55 an hour at the overtime rate. When I hire a civilian dispatcher to work overtime, they're at $33 an hour. So you can imagine how quickly I'm overspending my overtime budget for civilian dispatches when staffing shortages are a critical issue. I know it's done some other areas of state, the cities and towns and their local PSAPS. They have part-time per diem dispatches. These are fully trained dispatches that come from other communities, communities such as Ashburnham, Westminster, Lunenburg, Leominster, where they're up to staffing levels and they have no overtime opportunity, and they're looking for opportunities to earn overtime. So by creating part-time per diem dispatches, this will give me the ability to bring and train people, no city benefits, they are per diem employees, they don't belong to a collective bargaining unit. This is something I've already negotiated with our dispatch union, that they want part-time, non-union people coming in, so they're not forced to work 16 hours each and every day. Ultimately, I would love to staff that room, day in and day out, 12 employees, but it's just not realistic in today's labor environment, where just like police officers, just like dispatchers, trying to find employees is extremely difficult. So in the meantime, I'm looking to create a little less stress on my civilian dispatches, where they have the opportunity to turn down an overtime shift. So if there's a vacancy and they're offered the overtime, they can turn it down, and we can reach out to one of our per diem folks that are fully trained, that come in and do the job on a per diem basis. In order to do that, I had to file two petitions. First of all, the per diem position has to be codified in how I pay them. How we pay them would be in the same manner that I currently pay a dispatcher who works overtime. Dispatches fall under a matrix, and we came up with a spot on the matrix that we would be paying per diem dispatches under that matrix. The second petition required that I create a special delegation for employees. We have some city employees currently working in other departments who are 911-trained dispatches. This will give me the opportunity to bring in a current employee, and I'll use one, for instance, one of my clerks. She's a full-time clerk, but prior to that, she was a dispatcher. She still has her certification as dispatcher. In fact, she works per diem in the city of Leominster. City of Leominster has been doing per diem dispatch for about a year, two years now. So I'm just trying to catch up to where they are. I mean, we're going to constantly be chasing employees, but just having this next step or this next opportunity should relieve some of the pressure put on my full-time staff from being able to take a day off and not work in 16 hours every two days. It also is going to eliminate me having to bring in that police officer at almost double the rate of pay. So that's why I asked for suspension this evening. I knew if this went through the committee and the chairs, it would be another month. In a month's time, I could spend thousands of dollars bringing that police officer in and not having the opportunity. I'm aware of at least three or four people that have already expressed interest in becoming per diem employees. However, we couldn't move forward without codifying where they fall under ordinance, how we pay them, and also the special delegation as an employee in the city of Fitchburg. I know I threw a lot at you this evening. I am grateful that we were able to speak about it under suspension this evening, and I'd be happy to answer questions relative to this.
All right. Just a moment, Counselor.
Point of information on what's the difference between the two?
Right, I'm getting to that. So first, before I get to that, I just wanted to ask the solicitor briefly, are these before us in ordinance form tonight? Or do we need them in ordinance form? Is it just a designation that we can make? I just want to make sure that we do get this moving along through whatever steps it needs to go through as expeditiously as possible. I know the special employee designation is something we can just vote. That doesn't have to be amended in our ordinances. But the pay matrix, will we need to have that in ordinance form? Or is this an authorization that we can give to the chief by simple vote?
So let me just rephrase your question so that I understand it, sir. Or maybe I should just ask the chief. Chief, do we need an ordinance to authorize you to exercise the power, subject to the approval of the mayor and city council, to hire?
No. Dispatches currently fall under Chapter 40 of the city code under police. They're designated in Chapter 40. However, there is no designation for pay for per diem part-time employees. And that was brought to my attention by Mr. Brooks, that we have to find a designation in order to pay them. These are part-time employees, non-benefited employees, almost like contracted employees.
So if I may, Counselor Brooks, Solicitor Brooks, we're calling for an ordinance here, and it's in the form of a petition. What chapter would we want to put it in?
Well, sir, I believe it would be going in Chapter 44, Section 10. Where we do all the ordinance employees.
So, Mr. President, would we take an amendment to that, so we'd identify this as a chaptered ordinance?
Can we have a motion to amend 10723 accordingly to make this an ordinance under the listed chapter?
So moved.
Do I have any objections? All right. The amendment has been made unanimously. Thank you. And that answers that question. As to Counselor Squallia's question, I do want to note for the record that 10823 is meant to be a completely different text block. It's meant to be a designation of this part-time per diem dispatcher as a special municipal employee under the State Conflict of Interest Law, as we've handled for several other positions over the last several months, so that they can be paid for two different positions under the city at the same time, as the chief noted, you know, so that we could have the department clerk also take these per diem hours and get paid for these per diem hours without triggering the conflict of interest law.
So the verbiage would be like in our packet to make the following addition to special municipal employee designation relative to the Fitchburg Police Department and civilian dispatchers?
Exactly. And for the record, for open meeting law purposes, I would like to note that this was a typographical error that was not caught until the beginning of the meeting this evening, and hence will fall under the unanticipated provision of open meeting posting requirements, and the agenda will be updated on our public postings subsequent to the meeting. Mr. Solicitor?
Just on one point. So our 107, if I can just inquire, just so that I understand what's happening, 107-23 is now an ordinance for an adoption under Chapter 40 of the Fitchburg City Code.
Correct.
And 10823 would be a vote to approve per diem dispatches to be special municipal employees.
That's correct.
And 10723 will go to a first reading tonight, and then we'll provide for a second reading.
At the subsequent council meeting, yes.
Would it be within your discretion to put 10823 on for our next council meeting so that we could vote for special municipal employee at that time when we finally ordain the position?
I think we could, and I think that might be preferable, given that I'm not certain we can designate a position special that hasn't officially been established yet. So I would concur in that suggestion and ask that... Actually, let's just get this out of the way. I would ask that we move to hold 10823, not in committee, just in council.
Should we amend it first?
Sorry?
Should we amend it first?
It already is. It just needs to be changed on the agenda. The actual petition is not being amended, just the posting is.
Okay.
But thank you.
To hold 10823?
To the subsequent meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. If there is no objection, it will be held. We now have 10723 before us in ordinance form in its first reading.
I got a question for the chief.
Go ahead.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Since you're looking for part-time, since we can't get enough full-time, I brought this up before and I'll bring it up again. Don't you think we should stop moving to regionalize dispatches, since you're having a hard time, Leominster's having a hard time, and other communities are having the same thing?
We've had this conversation, Counselor. I believe in the regional approach for PSAPS. We're just in a unique position of 45,000 residents, what I believe is 45,000 residents, a call service volume of 50,000 calls a year. And then you take Leominster with similar numbers, similar call volume, the impact that would have on a regional call center is overwhelming. What you see in most regionalizations is what you see in the town of Lunenburg. They will join Shirley, Air, there's four or five of them that will join together, then the Shoba Valley Regional Dispatch Center, for instance. Then the Shoba Valley Regional Dispatch Center represents five or six communities. Their call volume doesn't even equal what the Fitchburg Police Department does on a daily basis. That would be the first reason why I would object to any type of regionalization. The second part is having control over your incoming 911 calls at the police department. There's a huge advantage when a 911 call comes in, and I'll use for reference a squatting call at Fitchburg High School. So we get a call at Fitchburg High School of a horrific event. Our dispatches are right there, right next to my officer in charge, who acts as a quarterback in this situation. And during that intense time, that first two minutes or first one minute of a squatting call where you got a report of an active shooter, are so, so important. And having local hands-on, listening to that call, making behind-the-scenes direction is so important. That's why you see communities our size and larger are still running their own PSAPS. PSAPS play a very important role, especially in the towns that don't have the resources or the call volume. However, in a city this size, with the complexity of what we handle on a day-in and day-out basis, I would be totally against it, because I know what we're providing our citizens with immediate response to 911 calls. I appreciate you bringing it up. I know you're doing your due diligence and trying to look at other alternatives, as am I. We're constantly trying to hire. The job market is tough, and it's a big commitment. And to hire a civilian dispatcher, it's much like a police officer. They're going through eight to 10 weeks of in-service, in-house training before they're actually doing the job. So I appreciate you thinking outside the box. It's just something that I couldn't stand here and support bringing to the city.
Well, I don't know. I kind of disagree on them, but I can't do too much about it, unless I do more homework on that, and I probably will be, making different calls. Go ahead. I'm going to support your thing for tonight.
Thank you.
But don't be surprised if I come back with you and say we ought to go regional.
I'm always open to discussion. I will never be close-minded to it, but I know what we bring to the table continuing doing what we're doing.
Move to approve 10723.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?[1776.33]